All right, it's 7:02. We'll get started. This is the town council regular meeting. It's Wednesday, May 18th, 7:00 PM. You can jump on our Zoom meeting as well. The link is on the town website. You can also catch us on channel 79. And we'd like to start the meeting by inviting up Boy Scout troop number 31 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
Thanks, guys. And you're out of the church right in the middle of town, so it's easy, right? Why don't you step up to the mic here and just give us two seconds about what's going on?
So we're with troop 31, and recently we just recruited 20 Cub Scouts in our troop. We've been doing some service projects with the town, including Earth Day. We did some cleanup there. And then also for our senior scouts, we are planning some Eagle projects right now. We know this has a lot of opportunities, so we're going to be looking forward to those.
That's great. The Earth Day stuff was really, really well done.
We've also been planning our fair share of campouts, so we went to Oris Santa Nona up in New York State to do training for shotgunning, rifling, and fly fishing as well. And then we also routinely go up to Ward Pound Ridge to just do our camping. So we did a four-mile backpacking hike into a couple lean-tos not too long ago, so yeah.
That's great. Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming.
You play the drums, right? You play the drums, right?
I do, yes.
Multi-talented. And thank you. Thank you to the leaders, too. You guys are doing a great job. We appreciate it. All right, next up, we've got minutes. Approval of the minutes from our regular meeting held on April 20th, 2022. Any deletions, corrections, amendments? Any hands raised? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Next up, our special meeting on April 25th, 2022. Minutes. We're all on the tablet, so I think everybody got a chance to see them. Any deletions, corrections, additions? No, none seen. All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. And now we do a roll call. I missed that, actually.
Okay.
Robin Bates-Mason.
Here.
Rita Batino.
Here.
Tom Butterworth.
Here.
Mark Jimskey.
Here.
Steve Carl.
Here.
Luke Kaufman. Mike Morrow. Maria Naughton. Kimberly Norton.
Here.
Hillary Armand.
Here.
Christina Ross.
Here.
Penny Young.
Here.
Penny, welcome. Thank you for joining us from Norway. Holy smokes, that's dedication.
Commitment.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay. Next up, public comments. Members of the public are welcome to speak to the council on agenda topics scheduled for review and/or vote. Speakers are requested to provide their name and street address. Comments will be limited to two or three minutes. Subject to the total number of speakers. Would anyone from the public like to address the council?
I would. I'm on Zoom.
Oh, there you go, Tucker.
Hi, my name is Liz O'Connor. I live at 219 Marvin Ridge Road in New Canaan. I'll be quick. So I grew up in New Canaan, going to the movie theater here as a child with my friends and without my parents. It was such a fun, safe playdate that we did quite often in elementary school and middle school. And I would love for my two young kids now to be able to safely enjoy that privilege as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Tucker, anybody else out there? Oh, we got one, one, yep, one in the crowd here. Step up, come on up. You can come up to the mic, so we're recording the meeting, so need to make it official.
Joe Miller, 7092 North Wilton Road.
Hi, Joe.
Yeah, as far as the theater is concerned, I'm not really sure. I was under the impression, I think most of the people in this town were under the impression that this was going to be like a well-known operator that was going to be running exclusively first-run theaters. And then all of a sudden, out of nowhere, this, you know, second bidder comes in, and there's not really exact details yet, or if there are updated details from the Board of Finance, I'd appreciate if they were shared, just as far as the breakdown. I'm not sure. Is it Laura Budd? That's the... I'd also like to kind of hear how she was able to pitch this second idea to the other restaurants in town, because she's a heck of a salesperson. The second proposal is significantly detrimental to the restaurants that are here. I also think that there could be better uses from a regular operator for the second floor for additional rent. And we lost Darian's movie theater. We lost Wilton's movie theater. I'm on the northeast part of town. It takes me 15 minutes, just a round trip, to go see a movie. And when we go to a movie, we go out to dinner first, and so we're dining in Norwalk, right, or we're dining in Stanford. So now you have an area where you can pull from Wilton, Darian, Ridgefield, Pound Ridge, and have it as a center point. That will probably have a multiplier effect on other empty vacant... Unfortunately, there are plenty of them space in town. That's my comments, and I wish it were Q and A, but...
There will be, just to give you a comment. We don't usually comment on that, but we will be having a full public session with Q and A and everything about the theater and the proposal. So you'll be able to speak your mind, for sure.
Sorry, just to back into bits a little.
Okay. All right. Any other public comments? Tucker, is anybody else out there? Okay, moving on. Next up, first selectmen update. Kevin. Oh, you know what? We have to do first order of business, sorry. I have to, I'd like to add something to the agenda, so before we move to the next ones. We have approved the painting of our favorite building, the White Cottage. And we need to get that on our agenda to move the painting forward, so I'm not sure it'll be done by Memorial Day, but we'll at least get it moving. So we need a motion and a second, so let's see. Hillary makes a motion. Kim, a second, okay. The amount is somewhere in the... Okay, perfect. Johnny on the spot, $57,400, so let's write that in, and we'll handle that. You want to, we'll slot that in. Let's go right before we go into executive session. Is that okay? Yeah, so move that right before. And Tucker, if you'll just remind us when we get there. Get that done. Thank you. Oh, all in favor of adding that to the agenda? That's unanimous. Thank you. All right, sorry, Kim, sorry for the delay.
Good evening, Town Council. Good to be here. I guess I was here on the eve, three days after my stroke, so I won't tell you what the word of finance, but I did get a lot of emails and phone calls and text messages wishing me well. I appreciated all that. I'm doing very well, obviously. I have some loss of vision, and I'm very grateful for the treatment I got. And at Stanford Hospital and also our EMTs, who are great to arrive on Easter Sunday mornings. Anyway, thank you. I appreciate all the well wishes. COVID, COVID, our inimitable health directors on vacation down in Florida. We will do a, we're going to change the process for communicating. You know, we decided in the beginning of, well, we didn't decide. We had the platform of our Everbridge Emergency Outcall System to communicate the health emergency. But the Everbridge system is really designed for the EOC. So we're going to begin to use the website's e-notify system. We discovered 900 people had already signed up for that, for the alert box, because they thought, well, some of them, you know, predated COVID perhaps, but we were going to separate it out. So those who want to get weekly reminders that there's new information on the website for COVID, you can sign up on e-notify. We've added the category COVID-19 information. And you can either get text messages or emails to remind you that the information is there. Those who just want to go look at it, it will always be on the front page of the homepage and at the top. But we're going to take the alert feature, which is very prominent on the page, and reserve that for the use of the EOC. So Jen began to explain this in last week's email to those who get the Everbridge emergency notifications, and we'll explain it again tomorrow, but that's just a change in process. As far as COVID-19, obviously, there's a, you might call it a spike. They don't want to call it a spike in Connecticut, but the other four counties are... How many counties are there? The state has indicated last week, the Department of Public Health Commissioner said that those residing in the counties that have high levels, according to CDC standards, of transmission, they're recommending that people begin to wear masks indoors. However, Fairfield County and New London County are not in that high category. And the guidance is that with respect to Fairfield County residents, those who are at high risk of severe illness should talk to their healthcare providers about whether they should wear masks or take other precautions. So that's the latest guidance. The Commissioner also indicated that she cannot stress enough that the tools to combat the virus are in place and easily accessible. They include vaccines, first and second boosters, test-to-treat locations, therapeutics, self-tests, and state-supported testing. So that's where we are with COVID. I would point out, again, that New Canaan remains the highest vaccinated and boosted town in the state by far. Well, I should put a little head of Darian Westport, but there are parts of the state, like Bridgeport, that are at 25% vaccination rates. So it shouldn't be surprising that when there is an uptick, that those locations that don't have high vaccination rates are leading the state in the uptick. That's COVID. Capital Projects. But by the way, as Jen says in her weekly update, we continue to test with PCR testing Monday, Wednesday, Friday, 7:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and we continue to do vaccination clinics. And this will getting out in a few weeks. That may change, but for now, we be interesting to see if we have much of an uptick with the high school prom. But those resources are out there. We're one of the only towns that are doing that for their residents, so. Capital Projects. We finally have CHP installed in this building, not yet operational, but the equipment's downstairs. EverSource Gas, two years ago now, the pure, the agency, the state agency that regulates the gas, three gas companies, changed the rules. They decided to stop Governor Malloy's tenure program that gave the three gas companies incentives to expand gas usage in Connecticut. So EverSource has informed us that they, all three gas companies have 90 days to cease their expansion efforts that were based upon incentives. The incentives are things like, you know, when they go to measure the cost of a project rather than amortizing over 15 years, they could do every 25 years. So what this is going to mean for New Canaan is, in some cases, it may get more expensive to hook up, especially for businesses. But the good news is EverSource will begin very shortly the expansion on Pine Street, Grove Street, and Upper Elm Street, and Forest Street, and they will also bring the gas into Avenue Park to bring it over to Latimer Center, where we're going to do CHP. So that's bad news on EverSource, but we've gotten most of the expansion that we were promised four years ago when the whole project started. There will be a public hearing on June 28th by Zoom, virtual, on the 1837 Pomacher Road Cell Tower. Various of our first responders will be testifying, and anybody, the way these Connecticut City Council hearings run is anybody who wants to come in to a public hearing in the evening, after they come, they come, they do a site visit, and then they have a public hearing in the evening. So that'll be on June 28th. On the Capitol Projects, we actually have contracted for the solar on the high school roof and for the separate facility for the, on the high school roof, for the Duney Fieldlights. West Park Building Project is now in a phase where we're looking at a alternative, we call it the Town Hall model, where we're going to keep the front of the building and remove the rear of the building and build a new rear. Yesterday, we met, and we're going to have both architects, one architect, address that, and the other architect, who had proposed renovating the entire building as it is, is going to update his model to see. We learned a lot by looking at that model, and it seems to be the favorable one, but it'll be more expensive, but it'll be a better project for the long term, just like this building, you know, was a better project to build a new back end. We have a separate internal group studying the range, the need for the pistol range, rifle range, which Reskai continues their regional plan, so that is moving along, just to what our plan will be for practice facility for the police. The Board of Selectmen looked on Tuesday at the 8:30 J affordable housing plan, which had been out for comment, although there's a due date of June 1, because of the timing of approvals, we're going to take it up again on June 7, and get an extension for a couple of weeks into June to file it. I believe the 82G moratorium application has been filed now. 220 Elm, the superintendent is working on his plans to move. And Mark probably knows more about the status of the open funds with the Community Foundation, but we'll be back in June with at least the Community Foundation open funds and probably one or two other projects on ARPA. And then finally, on Tuesday, with the Board of Selectmen authorized the creation of a new position for a full-time emergency management director, we realized that planning for to make New Canaan a safe town is very important, and although we have two part-time volunteers right now, we really have to make it, a lot of towns in the surrounding area are making it their full-time. Greenwich was soliciting for one, and I also was afraid of losing our current part-time person, so we'll probably announce him next week. There's only two internal candidates that are qualified, and I suspect one of them will get the job, because the other one doesn't want it, so. For full-time emergency management director. And again, you know, we want, you know, people come to New Canaan because it's good schools, but we also want to be safe, and, you know, planning for all kinds of potential things that can happen to a town is very, very important, so we're upgrading this position to be full-time. And I believe that's all I have.
We talked about the swing space for the PD.
It's not official yet, but we're very close, and we have a handshake agreement to take over the whole 39 Locust Building, which makes a lot of sense, because all the police can fit there. And we will work with Darian for some use of their facilities for the period that we renovate the building. But 39 Locust is a good fit for us.
All right. Christina.
Kevin, with regards to the leasing, I believe it's Locust Street that you're talking about, the Board of Ed building?
Yep.
So how long will that lease be for? Will it just be the term that's left over by the Board of Ed?
No, no, their term goes to '26. We will only take it through '24. And this is assuming we shove it in the ground, the second, first, second quarter, next year.
Yeah, that Board of Ed lease has an exit strategy, just to give them a certain amount, and they can get out, which is nice.
Okay.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving along, financial update. It's like we have Ann. Josh is on our agenda, but... Oh, Josh, you out there?
Yep, I'm here.
There you go. All right.
Just sharing my screen right now. Hopefully, you can see this. Hopefully.
Getting close to the end of the year here.
Yeah, so we are at the 83% mark right now of the year. So these are the financials as of April 30th, 2022. So just a quick look at the revenue side of things. The overall revenue is topping 100.7% of what was budgeted for the year. And over to the tax collects, current and prior year are both actually at 101% what was budgeted, which represents a 1.5 million from the budget. Down, kind of following the same trends as what we've been seeing, the building permits and conveyance fees are at 114% and 160% of what was budgeted, totaling just over 775,000 over what we had budgeted for the year. Again, parking is still kind of lagging behind, but a lot of that is mainly due to timing of how the permits are purchased, and also people kind of still slowly coming back to coming to work. And it's possible also that the other revenues line may be also on pace to exceed what is budgeted. Currently, it's at 91.5%, and there's still a couple of months, like you said, to go of the year. Are there any questions on the revenue side of things before we go to expenses?
Questions, guys? Now, keep going, Josh.
Sure. So on the expense side, like I said, we're at the 83% mark, and we are overall at 76.25% of the expenses that we budgeted, which is about 1.5% better than we were at last year at this point. We're still kind of currently working with the departments, kind of going line by line to see where we're going to end up at the end of the year, but we're kind of expecting to hit what we had planned, what we had budgeted for, for expenses. And that's kind of all I have for you.
Any questions for Josh or Ann?
I have a question. I'm not sure if this is pertinent, but when I was on the BOE call, they were talking about, Dr. Keating was talking about claims for the year were up, and something about stop-loss insurance. And they said that that was an issue on the town side as well, and I was wondering if you could kind of explain that a little bit.
Well, basically, how it works, so the claims are up, but the offset of most of those claims going up is the stop-loss, and that's the reimbursement for anything over 300 for the Board of Ed and 100 for the town. Where it comes into play is when you have to renew the stop-loss policy. So they've got to recoup some of that, those losses.
Because you have a really good deal right now.
Yeah, and you can, you know, whether you look at which way, side you look at, you can go back out and bid out your stop-loss policy, and you're starting from scratch again.
Right.
Because the new company is not carrying your experience. The old company is, and they're the ones that are going to put it up. So currently, our budget is covering and coming in with what we're thinking on the town side. And there's, it's budgeted in there for an expectation of it slightly going up, and the Board of Ed is also budgeted close to 500, 600,000 on their stop-loss premium for next year on it. But it's all related to, there's a couple of things going on, if you can imagine, and it's people catching up that were catching up on elective surgeries that they put off, and they were comfortable to go back, so there was a spike there. When you have that extra, when you have, unfortunately, a high claimant come in, it's a 300 automatic cost for the Board of Ed and 100 for the town. So if they come up, you know you have the $300,000 increase there. But, you know, the claims right now, say for the Board of Ed, are coming in, it's probably coming in at about 15 plus, but they've already got 2.9 in stop-loss reimbursements, because those high-cost claims are getting, we get reimbursed on them.
Right, so that you don't anticipate any issue with covering that and having any issues with the stop-loss?
No, because we have an Internal Service Fund.
Yeah.
So with the Internal Service Fund, that's meant to take up the gain or loss. So if, for some reason, because we set the budget in the town of the Board of Ed, that money gets transferred over to the stop-loss. If, for some reason, it's more than you budgeted, the Internal Service Fund takes that loss. So you keep your normal general fund flat, so you would just then increase it the next year to...
We're confident we have that all covered, then?
Yeah, yes. Basically, that's why we have that separate fund for it.
Thank you.
Excuse me, is the Board of Ed having to come for special appropriation now?
I can't speak for them right now. Right now, their corridor is there.
Okay.
What we call their corridor, the 40%, so I can't speak for them, you know, they really need to. But from just looking purely at the numbers and the fund balance and estimations for one month left of the year, month, six weeks, their corridor is currently there.
Okay, so we can maybe talk, well, we could talk about it, because I have some stuff in the BOE meeting that addresses that, too, so if we can talk about it.
Okay, good. Any other questions? Mark, Penny, no. Okay. All right, thank you very much. All right, item number six. Jack Nicholson is here from our audit committee. Welcome, Chuck. This is an update on the county firm.
Yep.
Don't want to screw things up.
Okay, so I'm here, I think, to, I'm sure, I'm representing the Audit Committee, and we've had our regular meetings, and one of our requirements is to come forward with the recommendation for the independent auditor for this year. So we've had discussions with Ann, with Lunda before that, with Joanne, with respect to, you know, PKF and their performance. And we've talked to Joe, you know, about his plans. And also, we recognize that Ann is new. And there's, I forget the name, but I know that there was recently announced a replacement for Joanne at the Board of Education, and so you know, we considered whether it was something we wanted to do to go out and consider a proposal request and decided that, you know, there's really no reason to do that, especially with the change in our finance, people in the town and the Board of Education, the performance of PKF, the fact that they have some practices in place to rotate their partner so that, you know, in theory, it doesn't become too tight a situation. And so Joe Satafani has been the partner since, I think, about 18, so this is maybe his fourth year, I think. So in any case, we're here to say that we strongly recommend that we, that you go ahead and engage PKF. As far as fees go, I think you have something in front of you, maybe the engagement letter? I think they do. But over the past three years, as it relates to, you know, we had COVID, COVID, and so on, we've kind of asked PKF to keep things pretty flat, and they have. So for the past three years, it's pretty much been flat. And they're experiencing the same kind of increases that everybody else is with respect to their staffing and other, you know, internal operating costs that they have. So they've asked for about a 6% increase this year, which we think is fair and reasonable. So that's what's included there. There could be, you know, extra things that they're asked to do, or there could be additional requirements that come from the state, I think you know better than I do.
Yeah.
They could be asked to do some audits in connection with some of these funds.
The ARPA funds?
There, those funds. So that could be more. But it is what it is. I understand from Ann that the state will select certain towns to be looked at closer by their auditors.
Let's hope we don't make that list.
That's not yet been determined.
Yeah, that's great, because Chuck had brought it up, where you'll see in the contract, it says, if applicable. That's if we're chosen, so we may not be chosen. The state's going to randomly pick towns and cities and do, ask the firms to go into a deeper level that, you know, the order is a certain engagement. They don't go into that level of following the uniform guidance, it's called, from the federal government, so that would be additional.
So and the other thing I'd say is that we did get together with the Board of Selectmen yesterday, and also Kevin. And I think one of the requirements is there's a select committee or something that yourself and Kevin and...
And the Audit Committee.
And the Audit Committee.
Make the recommendations.
So we're jointly making the recommendation.
We also approved the contract yesterday, subject to your approval, so.
So that's about all I had. Any questions?
Just a little, just a little history for the new members. The, this is, the Audit Committee was set up by the Town Council, written in and created by the council to give us more insight into different areas of town, and we, that were on the council at the time... And we, we uh, that were on the council at the time understood that we just don't have the financial acumen that or the bandwidth to do what these guys do, and we appointed probably the best audit committee that's ever been assembled, at least that I know of, in in, you know, I'll say in the state, I don't know about the whole country, but the these guys have been amazing, an amazing addition to town, so. It's the first time that, because of the the way we wrote this ordinance, we wanted to make sure that there was checks and balances. And the, this uh committee and the first selectman and the chairman of the the Town Council always are gonna get together to select who this is, to approve it. But it always comes through the the Town Council, you know, as a, as a, every single year you'll see it, so uh that's how we do this every year. And um we usually ask about um history of the audit firm who's auditing us. And this particular firm has been great over the past few years. I think we've been really happy with uh the reporting and the and and the depth that they've uh given us. So I'll give you that as the preface, but obviously you guys, you may have questions for Chuck or for Kevin, or, you know, we'll open it up.
And one other thing I might mention, just PKF, you know, it's not one of the big four. But um but they have, you know, fifteen hundred people, and they have offices throughout mainly in New England, but all throughout the East Coast. And they have a hundred fifty partners, so it's not a, not a small organization, so they have, you know, all of the internal controls that you would expect and the peer reviews and all that kind of stuff.
So on the ARPA, and this may be a question for Ann or or Mark, uh or you, Chuck, but um so the state may select us for an in-depth audit on our, but but let's assume they don't. Is there a certain amount of monitoring or auditing that we would want to do just to be responsible to see that the money's being well spent?
We've, we've, um, the staff members that are involved in it and who will be doing most of the purchasing, we have the uniform, which is gonna be our main guidance, the uniform uniform guidance from the state, so or from the federal government, so that's who we're following as we go through. The approval levels that are going through right now to approve all the different projects have been, you know, followed, so we have those checks and balances as we go along. So when we go to uh do a project that's agreed to, it has to follow the RFP process. This, the federal government, our purchasing guidelines are more stringent than theirs. So if we're using ours, we're covered because their their threshold is a lot higher than ours, five hundred thousand dollars. Or I'm sorry, fifty thousand dollars on some stuff, so in following ours, we're way below their threshold of what they're gonna look at. So I feel confident as we follow through and we make sure we follow our purchasing policy and some of the changes in theirs, um we're good.
Yeah, but Tom, I I agree, we 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 have discussed this among ourselves and in the committee, and and I do believe that this might be you know, that those expenditures, we're aware of the process that that you're all going through with respect to approving things. Um and um, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna have select internal audit efforts that are gonna take place, we think it is budgeted, and we plan on, we kind of stopped that for a few years. But this was one of those things that we probably will do, um you know, in the normal course of things, just to make sure that it meets the the requirements internally, even if we don't get the state, which we don't, I don't, I personally don't expect.
Well, so historically, just so, and that's a good point to bring up, we, a few years ago, we started doing these internal audits, wherever there was cash in town.
Yeah.
These guys focused on, okay, we need to audit this stuff, so anytime cash was being exchanged, they went in and they did a full audit, so those those are things, I mean, the reason that we created this, we are, the one thing we have in this town that we need to protect above almost anything else besides public safety is our triple A rating, because it it affects everything we do. And that's why having all these checks and balances in place are, that's the reason that this was.
This is one of those things that, you know, could blow up.
Right, right.
In terms of process, I think, I agree with you, I think it's a great idea. So in terms of um how you decide what you, like, so you're thinking, we're thinking about looking at these, are, like, do you make that decision? Do we ask them to do, they have, what is the process for you deciding what you think you should be focusing on?
For for the internal audit, you mean?
Yeah, like, yes.
Yeah, well, we we, you know, we have discussions with Ann, we have discussions with um Joanne and the new Joanne.
Yeah, actually, his name is Sean O'Keefe, so for the record, Sean is our new.
And certainly among our, among ourselves, um and, you know, what we hear, um which comes up occasionally. There's, there's certain things that do surface that need to be looked at and are looked at, so.
Then you can just look at it.
We kind of, we kind of look to control all that.
Yeah.
You know, from, from our committee, um and, you know.
Truly independent, I'm just.
Well, so, yeah, so they are true, they want, we wanted to set them as truly independent, however, if the council were to say, okay, we have reason to, for you to look at something, we could bring it to their attention.
Absolutely, we welcome that.
Yeah, exactly.
I I, and this again, it's just, I'm just curious, we couldn't say, oh, we don't want you to look at that, like.
No, no, no.
That's not how it works. Good.
No.
Awesome.
Any questions out there, Penny or Mark?
None for me.
Thank you. Hillary, anybody? You guys all good to go? All right. Chuck, just once again, just thank you for, you, you were on the inaugural committee, you and Bill Perret, and you guys have just done a yeoman's job bringing it, bring it to to fruition, so how long you been on? You've been on.
Um the, the committee was formed in fourteen.
Yep.
I think, I think out of the members.
Only one.
There's only one that's rotated.
Yeah, so uh the the institutional knowledge is is huge, especially when we have the talent that we have, so appreciate that. Kevin, you wanna say anything?
You know, for those who don't know, we have two retired CEOs of Deloitte. Makes it a pretty powerful.
I know, I'm, I'm happy to say that I'm the one non-Deloitte. KPMG. So if we were giving ARPA funds to Deloitte, we'd have a big problem.
Yeah.
So we need, we need to approve this, okay, so um we need a motion and a second, so Tom, you wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I move uh that we continue the engagement of uh PF, PKF O'Connor as outlined in item six on the agenda. Second. Oh, Mark's second, okay, good, thank you, Mark. Uh all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much, thanks again, thank you, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, next up, item number seven, Wavine House Restoration Preser- Presentation. Uh review and discussion regarding proposed restoration plans. Tiger Lee Cromwell and Bill Ossman, welcome. I said, I said preservation and presentation, because part of this is preserving what we have, so uh very exciting. I remember Chris Huzzy drilling in my head, every, every meeting, Chris Huzzy would say, we've got to take care of what we own, we can't buy any more. Let's take care of what we own, so here we are, taking care of what we own.
Well, that's what we're gonna try to do. So thank you for having us. Um I'm joined at the table by Lee Cromwell and Mitchell Levy, uh there with MKL Design. Uh to give you a little background, Lee's been, uh, I didn't realize Lee you were on, been here with us since two thousand and fifteen. Yeah, before that, uh, working on the, on the Wavine House through various iterations. She sat um and worked with our Wavine House Restoration Advisory Committee, which came forward with the uh recommendations that we then went to design with, uh so she'll kind of bring it back and then forward and then uh where we are at present. And then at that point in time, we can answer any questions that she might have, which she's gonna try to meld all the presentations that were given to the council and the Board of Finance from all the previous iterations into one.
We only have four hours, so.
Going way back in time.
Okay.
Lee Cromwell, I've been, lived in New Canaan, I guess now about thirty-six years.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, could you move that?
Sorry, Lee, Lee Cromwell, I've been in New Canaan resident for thirty-six years. I'm accompanied tonight with um business, a partner from um Mitchell Levy uh with MKL Design Studio. Unfortunately, Mike Jamanz cannot, could not be here tonight, he's engaged in another project we're working on with a architectural review committee. But anyway, uh to get started, um I don't know how much you know about Wavine House, it was finished in nineteen sixteen, um it was done by a noted architect of Brooklyn and Greenwich, um his name is William Tubby. The building is a Tudor revival building, is very well noted for um the characteristics of Tudor revival. Um it was nominated to the National, uh National Register of Historic Places. Uh I think that was, when was that, in um two thousand and nineteen, so you know, that was a few years ago as well. How does this slide thing work? Okay, so this is a timeline, it's kind of an overview of uh how long the town has been involved in ADA legislation, federal legislation. The first enactments for, of of the Legislation Act was of the American with Disabilities Act was nineteen ninety. And then it was the Amendment Act of nineteen ninety-six, that even back then, in nineteen ninety, the town did jump in in around two thousand and um had a team that reviewed services, uh buildings and overall. The problem with that, that act initially was, it really didn't define disability, and the one that came out in ninety-six did. And in that, you, just after it was effective in January of two thousand six, of two thousand nine, um the town enacted a committee that meets pretty much regularly every, several times a year, right, Tiger? I think Tiger, you're, you lead the team, right?
I'm the chairman.
So if you have any questions, Tiger's the person to ask about that. But going forward, in two thousand and eleven, the town um contacted a firm. Fortunately, I can't read. Seven engineers that did a study on all the buildings in town, and it included Wavine, they looked at um energy, you know, mechanical systems, all kinds of things about the building, but they also looked at ADA. And that they provided a very in-depth report on that. Um then going forward, um the town wanted to look into moving forward with accessibility issues on Wavine and seeing what could be done. So they put out an RFP and um we submitted on that, I was at KSQ at the time. Um I should actually mention that Mitchell and I have known each other a long time, and the person I was with at KSQ, Armon Quadreni. I know, we all knew each other at Perkins Eastman, we were all there for a lot of years. That's a a large architectural firm in New York City. They, naturally, they acquired SMS Architects in New Canaan, which I was first with. Um I was at SMS for ten years and then Perkins Eastman ten years, and then gone forward. But anyway, I think of four or five people submitted on that um qualification and proposal. And uh we were selected to look into um existing conditions, um recommendations on Wavine House, and that was about two thousand and fifteen. And this is the report that was generated. We had a structural engineer, we had a mechanical engineer, we had an estimator, the very, very preliminary schematic plans were included with just noting what, you know, might be considered as something that could be done. And so with this report, um the town then decided, I guess the first selectman, to appoint a committee. Um the first committee of, I believe, six times, in two thousand and sixteen, they were called the Wavine House Committee. And they were primarily charged with looking at uses, um cost, uh how, what's the marketability of it? Operations, uh determining if if the use was warranted. And those, the people on that committee were Penny Young, Suzanne Jonkers, Krista Kennon, Bill Holmes, Stephanie, Stephen Parrott and Marty Shagunas. Then it, that, it went forward in two thousand and eighteen, the first selectman appointed an ad hoc committee that was given a ninety-day review to come up with accessibility options, what are the options, explain what they are, and show the pros and cons. Can we go forward?
Next slide.
Now, this is the two thousand and eighteen Wavine House Renovation Advisory Committee that was appointed by the first selectman. Joining them, there, there were, um, we, not just with them, but other groups involved too, eight meetings or more. There were with the architects, and then I should note that of the, the two thousand and eighteen committee, uh they, they had a lot of meetings that we were not involved with, the first time we met with them was in October of that year. And they were the ones then that um, we also met with um Christopher Lau, code official, the fire marshal, the bill, the building department. Shipo, the State Historic Preservation Office got involved. And um, who else was on this slide, I can't see. Tiger, Bill, the first selectman, um next slide, please. And then we thought you'd just pause for a minute to tell you who we are and who the team was that has been working on Wavine for several years. Um so, Mitchell, you want to introduce ourselves, sir? I'm doing okay, well, so anyway, um Mike Jislandi is our part of our firm, Mitchell Levy, myself, and Kristen Bassett. Uh have been working on the Wavine project, uh we're joined by DeSalvo Eric, DeSalvo Engineering Group. Used to be Erickson a long time ago, um and uh Kohler Ronan, mechanical, electrical, plumbing engineer, fire safety, that type of thing. So then the next slide. I've already mentioned the report that was done, that's just introduced here. I'm sure Bill has copies, if anybody would like to look at it. And next slide, please. The, as I mentioned, in two thousand and eighteen, the the committee was tasked with examining areas that are making the building accessible, more accessible, and listing the pros and cons. Now, these documents were produced by that committee, one is an old drawing that they just marked up, um print of one of the old, original drawings showing five like locations that might be considered for an elevator. And the document on the right are the notes they made about what's a good idea about it, what's a bad idea about it. They narrowed it down to uh, to uh one, near the ladies' current restroom. It's also borders um where the little bandstand is, one in the stairwell, the grand stairwell at Wavine House. And one in an area that has a couple of closets that at first they thought connected. Primary objective of the committee was, though, to do the least damage to the house. Possibly do it someplace that could be restored to its original condition, if if it ever came to be that they wanted to do that. That's one of the tenants of the um guidelines for preservation, rehabilitation, any kind of preservation methods. And they narrowed it down, they eliminated the west porch because that was too costly and expensive, expanded the square feet of the house, which could have made different code uh requirements come into effect by adding to the square feet of the house. The other one with the, where they thought there might be some closets, they, they really didn't stack. And then I, there was also the ele, where the, there's a, a baggage elevator, but it's not uh big enough for a full-size elevator, you'd have to demolish structural walls, and maybe some of you don't know, but Wavine is is really built like a forest for fortress, the walls are masonry bearing, there is steel in the structure. Um all the floors are concrete, the roof is concrete. The the build, the builder at the time, Lapham, and the architect were very concerned about fire, based on all the fires in Rhode Island, so they decided to make this one something that wouldn't burn. So moving a bunch of of masonry-bearing walls was, you know, demolishes the building. It, it's costly, it's difficult to do, so the committee narrowed it down to liking the area of the stairwell for the elevator as the best choice, because it lead, did the least amount of damage, the route was highly accessible. Some of the other parts of the building, corridors are too narrow. And the, and they also voted on where they thought the bathroom should be, and that was, they elected a certain area of the second floor. Because there was already plumbing in that location, it was felt it could, um, you could accommodate the quantity of toilets and lavatories you would need in that location, so anyway, this document shows that they then did vote on, oh, where that, what they thought would be the best option, and they voted for the toilets on the second floor, the elevator and the stairs. And it was after that point that um, that was sometime in July, I believe, July of of that year, that we came on board in about October. And so we took it for there, uh next slide. This is just a um hardline sketch that shows you more easily where those different locations were. Next slide. So anyway, the, the committee was tasked with um overseeing, they went back to the first selectman and asked. and asked if they could continue to work with the architect. And so the first selectmen agreed. And tasked them with working along with the architect on the routes, the actual design of what the elevator might look like, how the toilets were laid out, the lavatories, all that. And we went forward with there. Like I said, there was about eight meetings, but I think there was only four or five with the actual committee. Next slide. Initially, we thought it might possibly be phased. But we broke the projects into the bathrooms, the elevator stairwell, and getting to the building, the accessible site, and getting into the building. And if it was going to be, there was also thought that it might be built in that order. Because, you know, they want Waveney House to remain operational and parties and all to continue. So next slide. When we got into talking though with the building department's fire marshal and the code consultant, Christopher Lau, he advised and the committee agreed that the terrace was also a very important aspect of accessibility. And so we were going to look, that became part of the program as well. That wasn't initially contemplated. And the fire marshal in the building department said, well, if you're going to have more people on the second floor, you're going to need a better exit stair because the riser height and the treads were not correct. So that became part of the project as well also. Next slide. So the next few slides just indicate that we went through a lot of iterations and with the committee on what everyone consensus, consensus building on what would be the best way to go. We looked at a lot of schemes for the west porch, of how to get into the building, how the ramp would be or a walkway. And we ended up with the idea on the right where it's a very gradual slope of 1 to 20. I don't know if anybody's been to the site, but that part is about done. It works much like the sidewalk for Town Hall. It's no longer considered a ramp, it's considered a sidewalk. And it does make a much more graceful entry. And you feel like you're going in the front door, not the back door. Next slide, please. We also looked at the loggia and what might happen there. At first, we looked at just ramping within the loggia area, but that just didn't work very well. So the committee asked us to look at raising the loggia. Initially, there's one step to the loggia of five inches and one step into the building of five inches. So we needed to get people up 10 inches to be able to get into the building. And Steve Binko came up with a great idea of putting the ramping in the back of the front flower planting bed so that, you know, we don't take up loggia space. It's a graceful way to get onto the loggia without being really visible as a ramp. And both doors on each end are now usable. Next slide. We also looked at access to the lawn. But since that rarely happens, the code consultant and the committee and the town officials agreed that on those rare occasions, there could be a temporary way of getting to the lawn. So we didn't pursue that option as part of this drawing package. Next, doesn't mean it couldn't be done, but. So anyway, this just summarizes the components of the accessible site. Getting from parking, or we also added a drop-off area. Getting from those areas into the building like it's the front door, doing the exit stair to make, exiting from the second floor more code compliant. And all along, this was kind of thought as the third thing that we'd be doing. Next slide. But as it happened, COVID came along and things halted for a bit. We were ready to bid the documents in January of 2020. And COVID kind of drew, draw that out. Eventually bids were, arrived in April. The extensions were asked for from the bidders because they didn't have workforce, they couldn't get estimates, it was hard to put their bids together. So, and then once the contractor was selected, Alden Bailey, that contract went into effect in October of that year. We had our first kickoff meeting in December, so we were into the cold weather months. And also because of COVID, it sort of drug things out because the town wasn't sure what they wanted to do. So we ended up moving the site work to the first part of the project. And that's now essentially complete. The only thing we have left to do are the automatic entry doors that are just drawn in as a sketch. But the walkway's done, the loggia's done, and the ramp to the loggia is complete. Next slide. So what remains, and I guess is what you're discussing now, are bathrooms on the second floor and conveyance to the second floor. So we've already, we've addressed all that with the committee and it's in the drawing, it's been bid. We began, examined a lot of different alternatives. That's next few slides, that's just what it illustrates. We selected the area, we studied it, we even studied where the master bathroom is to see if maybe we could separate the men's and the women's. We looked at a lot, a lot of different areas. And so anyway, the one circle in red is where we decided to study in more detail. Next slide. Again, we looked at, like I mentioned, iterations. The one on the, the darker one on the right is pretty much what was finally reviewed. Next slide. That's just a reiteration of showing you where it goes. And that is the final plan. With four toilets and two lavatories, four toilets for each sex are required in the plumbing count because of the square feet of the spaces used. And with needing four toilets, one would be accessible. So that makes the space an accessible space. Next slide. And we also looked at the current toilet that's down by the kitchen. When you have an assembly occupancy, which this is with the use of public space like that, a family bathroom is required. So the little toilet room down there is perfect size for that, has a diaper changing table, can be used by either sex. Next slide. And then we also examined with the committee, how the elevator would work and what the finishes were and that type of thing. We're actually using the basement, often, you know, an elevator has a pit that's dug and they can be quite deep, especially with hydraulic. And, but we're essentially making the basement the hole you would ordinarily dig into the ground. And then it's, it has a one steel, substantial steel post up the rear from the basement to the ceiling just below the attic that the elevator cantilevers off of. And see sort of a rendering of how it's conceived to look. The idea started with something more transparent and see-through. But the committee decided that they liked going this route. And that's what is represented in the drawings. Next slide. Did I leave anything out?
You did pretty good. Thank you, Lee, that's a great review. Get us up to speed.
Number of years.
Yes, quite a few years. All right, we'll open it up, questions?
May I ask something about the elevator design? Is that a birdcage design or is it?
No, it evolved from that. The committee looked at lots of different photographs that we got from history, from elevator companies that we knew, elevator companies we knew of. Gillespie in Massachusetts is the one that helped us work out the design. They had some pictures that they could show us. There's a company on the West Coast that's on quite a few. Their Restoration Hardware has one in their Boston store, it's a very large one. Some of the Disney World building hotels have very large birdcage. But we also looked at some that were more modern and it's kind of a birdcage that evolved. And actually, when SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, came and Todd Levine, he stressed the importance, he walked the site with us, he went through all the drawings. He stressed the importance that we should use the tenant of, when you, they use this when you're adding on to an historic building, that the addition should look different to the old so that you know what's old and what's new, as the Town Hall does. This was done intentionally. And he said that was a good idea, tenant to follow for on the interior too. That, so that you know that elevator wasn't put there in 1916. I mean, easily they could have.
Well, I think this design, just looking at it, it kind of addresses, hopefully, two of my concerns. The first being that it can be used by disabled people. And a birdcage would concern me because if somebody has motility issues with their arms, they couldn't close it.
Oh, right. You couldn't do that by elevator code anyway.
Okay, good. And then the second was that this location, if you had something that didn't have some transparency, would block the beautiful light.
Oh, and those gorgeous windows, yeah.
So this design is quite appealing because it does provide, it looks like it at least, that it would provide some light still coming through those windows. So that's why I asked if it was a birdcage design, couldn't tell. So it seems to address the two.
No, I think, I think you can thank the committee for evolving the design.
They did a good job, I think, because I think that was a big concern of mine is plunking down like an industrial elevator.
Yes, the original birdcage were quite clunky and dangerous.
Yeah, so I think that that is tasteful and it looks quite nice right there. And it serves the purpose. And it doesn't make somebody who's disabled sort of walk or get far from the main entrance to get.
Other questions, Rita?
The small family bathroom that's downstairs, is that also ADA compliant?
Oh, yes. Even because it's only essentially a single holder, the passageway to down, back, down there is narrow. And when you're having a party, the waitstaff is going back and forth. So it would, if it were the only ADA bathroom, that would present a problem because, you know, people I think would get run over.
And that's the only bathroom downstairs. So if anyone needs to go to the bathroom, they have to go upstairs.
Right.
I mean, that was.
Well, I mean, like Lockwood Mansion.
I mean, that's the one thing that I thought was just a little.
The Lockwood Matthews mansion in Norwalk, their bathrooms are in the basement. You have to take the elevator down. And right now, like for bridal parties and things like that, the people, you know, they are gathering up there because the brides room's there, the groom's room's there. And I think parties that I've been there, the people just aren't on the first floor.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we were limited to the space that we're given, unfortunately. We don't want to, as Lee said earlier, if you start ripping, ripping this up, it's going to be, there's this historical element to the, to the house, that's the problem.
And built like a rock.
Tiger's going to make some big signs for those public bathrooms though. Make sure that people know where those new public bathrooms are, right next door. Correct, yes.
Will those be open 24 hours or those get locked at dusk?
Well, usually, well, we'll decide at that time. They'll, they'll have mechanisms on them that we can control.
Oh, great.
So that if there was a party at night, we could keep it open. Or if there was something going on at the powerhouse or the carriage barn, we could keep them open. But normally, the other ones that we have, we lock during the dusk, since the park is down in the dusk, right? So, but again, given that, if that area is open and being used, then of course we would keep it open and we could just time it at that point.
I have a question. Thank you for the presentation, it was very helpful. Going back to the slide that has the different elevators on it, locations, it's got five different locations. I can see number four because that's, you know, why you ruled that out, that's on the outside of the building. Could you just walk us through location one, two, and five? Why those were ruled out and why you ended up with number three?
Okay, two is the bag, the current baggage elevator location. That there's a shaft, but it's not big enough for a modern elevator. You'd have to bump into the family bathroom on the first floor and you'd have to bump into a bathroom on the second floor. And both corridors in that area are quite narrow. You can't do a five-foot wheelchair, chair turn. So you'd have to probably bump a wall out on the kitchen on the other side on the first floor and do something similar on the second floor.
Well, also.
What about number one?
There's a, there's a flow issue. I mean, when you're serving meals, that's a heavily used corridor. So the fact that your key elevator would be right in the middle of your meal services just doesn't make sense.
When you play this, may one tennis from SHPO?
Todd?
When he mentions about it and the ADA being visible and doing it and less disruptive to the building, he appreciated that it didn't do that, you know, it didn't disrupt the building itself physically.
Right, right, that makes sense. What about number one? That looks like.
Okay, that's at the corner of, you know where the bandstand is?
Yeah, so that's not in the bathroom, that's in the bandstand?
Well, it would bump into that, what is currently the women's bathroom. And, but also you would, you would damage the area of the bandstand and the mural that surrounds the living room.
And the ceiling.
Yeah, the paneling and mess up, the mural, I mean, the mural has real historic value. I mean, the artist of that is in the Metropolitan, it's in the state capital, it's in notable buildings on the west, the artists did work in the west coast. So, you know, people didn't want to destroy the mural.
Right, now that makes total sense, thank you for.
The second floor, that's where the bathrooms are.
I see, I see you can put the elevator going to the bathroom. So one of the other things I was wondering, since you're going to, the bathrooms are on the second floor, what happens to all the old bathrooms on the first floor? Like I had heard something that there's, that when they go out of service, they're just going to go out of service, so there's going to be like a sign that says out of order for like the next 50 years or, I'm just curious, what's going to happen to those?
Well, there's been different talk about what the town might like to do. That, that room where you go into for the ladies' room used to be a waiting room for someone that came to call. I mean, it has nice finishes in it. And, but Waveney is very short of storage. It would make an ideal place for storing tables and chairs. And turn, then turn the billiard room back to use. Because it's really sad that the billiard room can't be used.
Right now, there's no place for us to put tables and chairs, so they're stored in the billiard room. And we really like to restore the billiard room in the library to more use for the public. Right now, they're basically closed off. But we need to access our storage facilities. So the thought is to take those bathrooms and then convert them into storage. So we would have tables on the floor, wouldn't have to shuffle them up and down. But then, at that point in time, we could then utilize the two better rooms, which are, in my opinion, in the library and the billiard room. I think it's a shame that they're closed and not, not allowed to be used either for an open party or just as their own. You know, if someone wanted to go out and rent out just the billiard room for a night out, that would be a pretty cool room to rent out, you know? Or to have a corporate junket inside the library and kind of, you know, do something or themed party inside the library would be kind of cool as well.
Yeah, that would be nice. I mean, with an elevator, and I know it's not a service elevator, it would also be nice to preserve that room since it right, it is right at the entrance like you would say, a waiting room. That's kind of a, it exists in such a great location. Can you store in the basement? Now would be, the elevator doesn't go to the basement.
The elevator is a two-stop elevator. Goes from the first floor to the second floor. And the basement area is used for, you know, the hydraulics. So the elevator is not going to the, and you can only do two stories with something open like that.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Christina?
Could you tell us a little bit about your firm?
Our firm?
When this project started, Stoa Architects was the firm in charge of that. And due to COVID, they had a few different offices throughout the nation. Due to COVID, they closed the New York office. And that was July 31, 2020. As of August 1, MKL Design was open. We are an architectural design firm that does, across the board, from commercial, hospitality, healthcare, public, and multifamily. We have licensed and unlicensed architects, designers on board. And we, we were about seven when, I think COVID, and then we lost a couple of people for movement. And we're right now at six and staying growing. So that's the front.
Who's the registered architect in charge of the project?
Mike Juzmandi.
And he's a member of the firm?
Yes.
Okay, he didn't appear on the website, that's what I'm asking.
Well, our website is still in construction.
I see. One of the things that I guess was omitted from the presentation was the fact that the location of the elevator started out as a lift. And then it evolved into a birdcage elevator and then into perhaps a solid elevator.
It was using the. It was using the old historic term that an elevator first was used was called a lift. It didn't mean, it didn't mean a Lula. Lift was only historic name. It's, it never was just a lift. It was always an elevator.
A Lula was used repeatedly during the presentations to the council. That's the only reason I'm saying. So, um, could you explain what the budget is for this project?
Um, well, Bill's probably a better one to tell us how the numbers have come back in. Because, you know, with the delay in the project, um, materials cost more. Bill has the most recent numbers that he's gotten from Alden Bailey, who originally bid the job.
Right. So the, uh, well, we, we originally, we bid it out basically either doing it in its entirety or phased. And to see whether or not there was cost savings, one versus the other. And there was a cost savings if we did do it, um, in a, with a no phasing, um, situation. There was a, there was a slight savings in cost. But at that point in time, the Board of Finance and the Town Council didn't want to spend that entire amount that we had, um, slated at the time. It was two point six four million dollars in a hundred and sixty thousand dollar savings. They didn't want to exercise the savings at that point in time. And we were given just enough money or a million dollars to go forward with one phase. Um, and as Lee mentioned, we were looking at phasing it a little differently than COVID hit, supply chain issues hit, the contractor, um, that we had. Came back and we, we looked at and we felt that it was a, for our first go at Waveney, our best thought was to be able to not necessarily have bathrooms and not necessarily have an elevator, but everyone into the facility safely and securely. And, you know, address all the accessibility issues to get in and around the building on the first floor. Right? Because we build the bathroom, we still don't have accessibility into the building. We build an elevator, we still don't have accessibility into the building. So we changed the phasing and did exactly what we had mentioned was we took care of the western entrance, we took care of the Lowe's issues. We took care of issues in and around the building around the first floor. So now you can get into the building and around the first floor and out onto the patio and enjoy the entire structure. And then felt that we would phase in the next two. And then the other factor was that the building department and the, the fire marshal came back and said, hey, we got to take care of this as well. So we built that in since we were working on the exterior of the building at that point in time, we, we, we took care of the egress. And at that point in time that we determined, where do we go next? You know, as far as bathrooms? Or, uh, do we go to the elevator first? And we felt that going next would be, let's take care of the bathrooms. And then since the elevators had a longer lead time to them, we could then look at the elevator last. But at least we could get bathrooms so that everyone, then we would have upgraded bathrooms itself, you know, throughout the facility. And then the last thing would be the accessibility issue as far as the elevator. Would it be better to combine the two together? Absolutely. But, you know, at the time, when we were looking at it budget-wise, we were asked to go and phase it out in three different ways. So that's why you looked at our budgeting was in three separate years, three separate numbers. Now, numbers have changed a little bit because as Lee mentioned, you know, it's twenty twenty, we're looking at bidded numbers from twenty twenty. And we're getting into issues with, uh, inflation and just carrying a cost for that amount of time. So while the bathrooms were slated at around six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, we're looking at nine ninety, including contingency. Six sixty was no contingency. So we had the nine ninety, it has contingency built into it. These are numbers that we sat with the contractor of record, Alden Bailey. He's done excellent work so far on the building. He did the roof. He's done that. He's done other structures for us. He's personally invested in the building, which I like, as a contractor, to be personally invested in the project itself. So we came forward and he said that the, you know, given that, given everything that's happened, where he's at, that nine ninety would, would be the number. And then looking forward to the elevator, he's still holding his number of one point six million dollars on the elevator itself. So that's a good thing is that the fact that that hasn't gone anywhere. And he's actually been looking and trying to find different suppliers for the exact same thing. To try to make sure that that cost will stay contained. And he's still working towards that, even though we haven't given another contract to go forward. He's still actively working on the project because we're looking at our doors. They were a twenty-six week lead time at the time of order. Okay, if you can imagine, right? Um, so we're still waiting for the doors. But in the end, you know, right, it comes down to, you know, if we combine them, could we go back and ask for maybe a small savings in the combination? Probably, we probably would see that anyways because waiting to go one more phase out and inflation and just overall cost of labor, right? You know, everyone's going to get a price, you know, hopefully get a raise every year. That's going to cause and drive that, that number forward. So would, you know, could we look at combining the two together? Absolutely. But that's really a palette for the Board of Finance and for the council to decide what you'd like to do. We know that we just need to move forward. Okay, you know, to be perfectly honest with you, um, in next Tuesday, the Department of Justice is coming to the town of New Canaan. And their first stop is Waveney House. So.
With regard to ADA?
With regard to ADA, yes. They weren't, they were originally coming because we had issues at the track or claimed issues at the track and at, at the water tower turf parking lot. And then subsequent to that, they received a secondary complaint about town hall, vine cottage, teen center, firehouse, the mead park pickleball courts and the mead park colonnade and the waving house. Now, we can satisfy pretty much all of them except for the Waveney House. Waveney House is the only one where we have plans and we've had a plan going forward. And we've been working on this, as Lee mentioned, and since, uh, two thousand, two thousand nine, two thousand eleven. However, you want to look at wherever, you know, our iterations start, but we've been working on it for about a decade and we haven't come forward with our final plan. That'll be looked upon favorably and unfavorably. You know, they're going to say, you had a plan for ten years and you didn't do it. Or thankfully, you have a plan, when are you going to get it done? And the, the discussions with them can go one of two ways. They can say, thank you, you have a plan, go forward. Or they can say, thank you, I have a plan. And within three months, I want it implemented. And within one year, I want it built. So they can do.
What's the lead time? Does, does the contractor telling you if he were an elevator like this today, that must take forever? How, how long does it, how long would an elevator like that take to build?
It's going to take time, six, uh, six months or so. The thought would be pattern of one contract. We'd be working right through the bathrooms, getting the bathrooms all done, prepping for the elevator. Um, there's a lot of prep work that has to be done for the elevator and basement and footings and what have you, and some structural stuff added for additional support. They could do a lot of that stuff because that's more labor intensive stuff and just wait to.
So the prep, so the prep work, basically.
Prep work, yeah. And then when it comes in, they'll assemble it.
Right. The assembly is the easy part.
The glasses, uh, uh, and glasses have been a little tricky getting these days, to be honest with you. That's, that might, that's mainly to go on to get the elevator. You know, but we do, he's been in contact with people and he's, uh, he's got lines on everything for this question.
To that end, you know, it does actually stand to reason that if you, if you phase them together, you can then release the elevator order and do everything as Bill mentioned prior to the elevator arriving. If we don't, we'll have the bathrooms ready and then we release it. And then we're waiting eight more months, if you follow me, right? Which, which gets to a point where, you know, we're just adding time to it. So, you know, there is, there is a cost savings to doing it now and there is a time savings to doing it now. And, you know, we might be at that, um, juncture regardless.
So have you broken down the numbers yet for us with like phase one, phase two?
Well, the, uh, the original phasing was, uh, six hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars for what was the bathrooms, one point six million. And then another four hundred thousand dollars for the exterior work. So now we're, we're done with the exterior work and we're looking at the six sixty is now nine ninety with contingency and the one six is still being held. So we're approximately two point two, two point four million. We could, we can go back to the contractor and try to tighten up what, what is there, but.
Is Board Finance looking at this actively?
Uh, we, they had tabled it at the time and, uh.
That was a while ago.
Well, I guess three months ago, two months.
Oh, I'm.
Yeah, they, at the time, we had nine hun- nine hundred and ninety thousand dollars in the budget and they tabled it at that point in time. And then they wanted some additional information, see if we could come together. And then we came to the council, the exact, but we couldn't come to you because since they had tabled it, we can't come to you with a number. So then you ask for more information, we're back to give you more information. So we're kind of going back and forth between the two town bodies at present. To say, okay, what, you know, what would we all like to do? And it was felt that we could take the money, sort of move. We could take it out and still come back later without affecting the budget and affecting the budget vote, right? Since it was a bonded item, it wouldn't necessarily affect your budget vote. It was in April.
Yeah. So if the Department of Justice comes and tells you, okay, great, you have a plan, but it has to be done by this date and we can't get it done by that date, what are the consequences?
They won't give us a date that we can attain as far as, you know, they'll say what they'll, what they'll look for is milestones. And so they'll give you milestones. So a three-month milestone might be your program, right? Your six-month milestone might be your, you know, or three months might be your policy, six month might be your program. And then other things that you have in the pipeline, project-wise, that we're, that we might be a little deficient on. They would then say, okay, how long to get this into the pipeline? And given what's going on in the, in the world, how long could you then, you know, where could you achieve it? And they're, they're not going to give you a timeline that you cannot achieve, but they're also not going to give you one that, you know, is, is now, you know, prolongs the, the situation, right? So if we told them it was a two-year construction process, they would give us two years to complete it.
But if they saw like the town not coming forth to do it, would there be?
At that point in time, then we're subject to fines and, 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 yeah, a lot of other problems that we, that we don't.
Do you know the amount or is it?
No, no, it's, it's all, it's all, you know, for the most part, we're, we're, we're in a very good position. But we have some openings, you know, we have, we have, you know, I don't like any chinks in the armor, but I got a couple of chinks in the armor.
Well, then you're under a microscope. You get fined and then they're.
And they're, right. So.
I have a. So hold on, uh, Kim first, then Hillary, then we'll come back over here with Mike.
Yeah. So it sounds like this is something that we definitely need to do and it sounds frustrating that the process has gone on for so long. Um, I just have a question about the bathroom. So how does the cost change by three hundred thousand dollars? From, that's like a year, in one year, when?
It's not one year, it's, it's two years.
Two years.
Yeah, we're two years plus, you know, so that, that's the problem that we have. Um, so you've got.
Makes sense to go out and rebid the bathrooms?
We can, you know, we run the risk of it coming in greater or running the risk of getting a contractor that we not, might not necessarily be comfortable.
Bailey was the low guy.
Right. And they, and they were a lot lower. They were substantially lower than the, uh, than the other bidder. Excuse me. On each project that we, that we bid with Alden Bailey, then they've been substantially lower and been able to deliver a very high quality project.
So that's for like eight stalls? It's, it's, it's like a hundred thousand a stall?
Well, four, it's bits, two separate.
I mean, it seems very high to me.
So, well, to give you an idea, the, the second, even without that, Alden Bailey was at six hundred and sixty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The second bidder, Cronenberger's and Sons, was one point six two five million.
Wow.
For the bathrooms. So even with that, Alden Bailey's still lower now, even with two years post than what we would have been paying for Cronenberger.
There's this historic preservation work too. It's not just toilets and lavatories.
Can you talk about that a little bit, Lee? What, what happens?
Um, well, if, if you take a look, say, in the second, well, you know, mostly the second floor. It's not just crown molding, it's plaster molding, much like what's in the town hall front entry. All the trades that do that kind of work, like refinishing the doors or, or replicating molding, it's really highly skilled labor. Uh, we're not talking about people that, you know, dig ditches or, um, and highly paid craftspeople, they're, they're highly paid. Get what you pay for and, and along those lines. So, I mean, there's things like the moldings, um, the, uh, doors, the trams. The elevator involves more of the cost than just an elevator. You're specifically asking about the bathroom, but, um, and toilets and lavatories went up too, and the faucets, all, everything has gone up. There's quite a bit of square footage in an ADA compliant bathroom, so that factors into it as well.
Unfortunately, you don't see where a lot of the cost goes. It should be behind walls. All the plumbing, all the lines, all the connections, rerouting, it's not so much the waterline itself, it's the drains. So you have to do it on a gravity, you don't want to do it on machines. So you have to do the lines, the connections, the leaders, all of that connecting work. And without destroying the building, you know, because it's not a wood frame building or a stud. It's surgical cut, replace, drill, fill, back in while meeting the standard of the building plus the health codes.
Of the ADA. Thank you. That sounds extensive.
Like eighty percent of the price is behind walls.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, um, just to kind of get us back to, I think we all agree that this obviously needs to happen, especially with the Department of Justice coming here next week. That, you know, puts a little bit of a fire under everybody. So where do we go from here? Like this needs to get before the Board of Finance first. What do you need from us tonight? And, and where, what's the next step so that we can get this moving? I think, right? I mean, I don't want to sit here and talk about bathrooms all night, but like, where does the rubber meet the road?
Exactly. And Tiger, I mean, we, we would like to give you whatever you need when you have this meeting to say, we just met with the town council and blank, whatever, what is the blank?
I mean. Well, in a perfect world, it would be both phases together because then I can answer, you know, truthfully and say, we just met with the council. And the council has said, they've, you know, we, we've gone forward, reviewed the plans with the new, you know, new members. That, that was, that was an important step. You know, it's a lot of money. It's an important step to then bring everyone up to speed and, uh, and say that we have a plan. You know, we have a contractor on board theoretically. The, the project would have to be funded, but it'd have to be approved by the Board of Selectmen. But we would have at least the first nod from the council to then go back to the Board of Finance and say that the council is in favor of, you know, phase two and phase three, your bathrooms and elevators, you know? And, you know, that dollar amount would come back to you because we'll go back to the contractor and try to hammer out a true number. Not a true number, but a, you know, a number for May eighteenth, you know? And then go to the Board of Finance with that number and then come back to the council with that number. But basically, it's, it's almost similar to what you did, I don't know, a month ago. Where you gave a nod to all of our projects that we could then talk to our contractors and say, it's coming, like for the Dunning Lights. I was able to go talk to Moscow and say, it's coming. Can you put me on your schedule? Because I need lights by August. And that helped, that helped immensely, you know? So then they listened because we had gotten the nod and all I had to say was on this date, funding's coming. On this date, the funding's coming. And then yesterday, the Board of Selectmen said, yes, pending you guys saying yes tonight, right? So I could say that to Moscow and Moscow said, thank you very much. And we'll put you on your schedule, on our schedule for August, very similar to that. So now I can go back and I could say that to the, to the DOJ and then we could go back to the Board of Finance and say, council's in favor. And then talk to the Board of Finance and hopefully the Board of Finance are the same answer. I think they will, given the circumstances that we're under.
I mean, we started, we started, we, we stood, just one second, sorry. We started on this road and some of us that have been here while, you know, we could have approved the entire Waveney job, right? What was the number of the entire job that we looked at way back when?
Two point six four three million.
No, the, the whole, the whole, the whole enchilada.
That was.
That was, it was a huge number. So. Yeah. So we decided that, we were decided that we were going to sort of bite it off in pieces. And the work that's been done so far between the roof and, you know, you see pictures of, of the, of the walkways and the walls that have been done. The work that, that this contractor has done has been outstanding. So if, if we were comfortable enough as a council to say, if the inside of this building is going to look as good as the outside of the building, um, you know, that's a, that's a big step forward. But, um, that's just one guy's opinion. Christina.
When I look at the budget of, of what you're presenting and asking for right now, I'm not quite sure that you're asking just for the bathrooms. So the bathroom's in the elevator.
That's, that's, that's what he said, perfect.
That's what I said, in a perfect world. In a perfect world, it would be both together and I could go to the contractor and package the two together and say, we have approval to do phase two and face, what revised phase two and phase three.
So you're open to either or or both?
Well, I, I also have a problem on next Tuesday, you know?
Why is that a problem? They're coming in and you said that most of the buildings are done. The only thing left is the ADA at Waveney and we already did the ramps. So it's not like we're being negligent about bringing the buildings up to ADA standard.
Well, it's been nineteen ninety-one. We're going to celebrate our thirty-second year in July. So the problem that I have is that I, you know, really very much like to be able to tell them that I have accessible bathrooms and a way to get to them. That, that was what I would like, in a perfect world, that's what I would like to be able to say. If, if the council decides that, no, and you want to choose one of the two, then I'll tell them that we were able to move forward on the second phase and if whatever that second phase would be bathrooms or elevator. But, you know, it's not just the council, it'd be the Board of Finance as well and then the Board of Selectmen, but the, uh, you know, Steve asked me, in a perfect world, in a perfect world, that's, they must, I would love to be able to answer that question then when, when, when questioned, when asked.
Not tonight, but some night we need a, for the new members, we need a, a half hour on prevailing wage too, so. Real quick, because I would like to move on from this particular topic, as I'm sure everyone else would. But I just want to understand one thing and I have a suggestion. Once we fix the elevator and the bathrooms, are there any other ADA issues outstanding on the property?
On the property?
Well, um, so let's talk about the building itself.
On the building, not to my knowledge, no. They would be fine. I mean, it, it'll be subject to their review as well. I would say that they're, they're going to come in. I would say that they're, they're going to come in and look, they might have a different view on certain things, but we can, at present, you can come from the accessible parking area through an accessible route, through accessible doorways into the building on the first floor. We would then be able to use an accessible elevator, the second, so accessible bathrooms on the second floor. And we could get out onto the patio. The only thing might be they say, well, you know, you can't get out into the lawn. We decided, or the committee decided at that time not to build that ramp to get out on the lawn and build something temporary if we needed to do that. Cause you theoretically could traverse the property. I don't think that that would be a, uh, something that they would trip on. The rest of it, yeah, we would be fine. The building still has some other work that needs to be done, but as far as, from an accessibility standpoint, we should be, we should be compliant.
All right. So that to me then seems to be a top priority. I mean, look, the ADA is a law, it has to be complied with. I, I've actually defended a decent amount of these accessibility cases, you know, with the feds, with the private attorney. So I know, I'm pretty familiar with the process and how it goes. One thing I would think to consider and just to buy us time as we're working out the plan and getting the proper funding is, and maybe we chat with our, uh, the town attorney over this who knows this area, but when they, hey, an historically designated landmark, there's an exception to ADA compliance. So what we can do is consider making that application just to buy time. I'm not saying don't do the ADA accessibility compliance, but on a little legal track, go to, to, two directions here. One, continue to move forward on getting our funding, getting our plan and getting shovels in the ground. Now, the second track, just parallel time, because it may play well with the feds when they come in, that may be worth having. An attorney will walk through there to represent the town's interests as well, so that statements that we're making to the DOJ attorneys or their compliance people, um, don't end up causing us trouble in the future. Because Tiger, I'd hate for you to make a representation to the feds, believe me, they record everything. Because if they have to move forward and give us warnings and then hit us with litigation and then we have to enter a consent decree because maybe we don't have any particular, you know, ability to say, oh no, somehow we're really in compliance. I'm just looking to protect us while we're working this thing out and that may be enough. You know, maybe, maybe an avenue to pursue. Now, the town attorney may have a different approach, but it's just a suggestion. So with that said.
Thank you.
Excellent.
So I like to say that the ADA accessibility is, does not end with an elevator is proposed because you have the second floor that stepped off above the kitchen area where the quarters used to be for the caretakers. And they're not accessible and you don't have a ramp coming into the kitchen or parts of the kitchen that ADA, that are ADA accessible.
We're not using the area where the, the servants were, were on the second floor at present. That's correct. Let me finish. So we have a plan for that area. Should we be moving the recreation department there? We can, we can satisfy that with a Lula, with a small lift to be able to take care of that issue. So that is in the works. It's just a question of at present, if we're not utilizing it, it doesn't have to be accessible. As far as the rest of the building, coming off of the, the building itself, our accessible entrances on the western porch, western area. We, you know, that'll be our argument at present, you know, to them as far as whether or not we can, we can satisfy other situations, we will.
So to your answer, if it does not meet ADA standards for the entire building, there will be others later on in more elevations.
So, um, we've got a question from Mark. Mark, you at there?
Yeah, thanks, Steve. I'll be brief. You know, just getting back to what Hillary was saying in terms of rubber meeting the road here, I just want to, and staying in our lane, I, I would, I would recommend that we bundle this and, and move quicker. So I'll say that and mute myself again.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it. Tom.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. People must be wondering how in the world we could have ever gotten to this dilemma by staging this out. One factor in, in some people's minds in that period was we were frustrated that we hadn't defined a use for the mansion. And Tucker's been doing work along that. And I think that, that that's less of a mystery than it used to be. But having said all that, I, I'm with Mark. I mean, like, I can't see one logical reason why we wouldn't bundle these two and move ahead. I think we've had a decision early, we had a discussion on another subject earlier to say that the, you know, accelerating capital project has no impact on the operating budget. So, or the mill rate. So this year's, so let's do it. So that's what I would tell, uh, board of finance. So we, we can have a quick straw poll, just, you know, we're not voting on anything, but we can just say that we support bundling this and moving it on and, and recommend that you take it to the next, uh, level and give you the confidence that you're going to meet with these guys, uh, this week. So, um, show of hands to bundle and move this forward. Uh, out there you've got, okay, and opposed. So it passes, straw poll passes anyway. So you've got your marching orders, Tiger. Thank you for presenting. Lee, thank you very much.
Thank you guys for all your work.
All right. Next up, we have, uh, the item we added to the agenda, I think, right? Tucker, is that where we are?
No, not yet.
Oh, project, sorry. All right, here we go. Projects, projects appropriations and bond authorization. Is that where we are?
Steve, can I ask for a motion? Your, the agenda does not have the breakdown on the town buildings broken down by amount. And neither does it have an administration and engineering. It has a lump sum amount. And I, I don't feel comfortable voting for a lump sum amount that's not defined to a project.
So, so the town, uh, these are bond appropriations and we've already drilled into all of these numbers. This is just authorizing, this is just authorizing the bonding only. So it doesn't have anything to do with, you know, it's, it's a, it's a total of the products that are being done, just like engineering is a big number, highways are a big number. Parks, you know, it's all, it's just a big bonding number. So there's no, there's no, there's no breakdown in this particular.
But we've had it in the past. This is the first time that it's coming in without a, a description as to what's included in.
Not that, not that I recall, this is the way it's always been. The budgeting is different than this. This is the final, just we're authorizing the bonding of, of the items.
Okay. So can somebody explain what's in it?
We, we've had all this stuff explained already. This is just a, this is just a show of hands. Right? It's what we always do. Okay. Well, you don't have to vote for it if you don't want to, but this, this is, this is the end of a long journey. They did this at the board of finance the other night.
Thank you, Tucker.
We've drilled down, we've drilled down this stuff a bunch of times.
Steve, uh, sorry to get confused, but aren't, aren't, aren't these listed as each item listed?
They are, but I can think the question is, under certain, uh, item D, what exactly is the $184,000?
Got it. Okay.
Okay. So it's here.
You got the background you want. There you go.
I think I'll be.
All right. Because this is just, this is literally at the, at the, uh, less than the one yard line, just the bonding stuff.
Tucker was ready for that one.
Josh has always had it, I had it, I've had it himself. All right, here we go. All right. So I have a list here to read into the, um, minutes. It's, um, items A through N. Uh, so there's, there's a lot of, a lot of reading to do. So I'm going to share the, share the reading. So does anybody, so as we go through these, um, Christina pointed out D, so we will, when we get to D, we'll pause. Is there any, any other, uh, items that you want to discuss before we just vote this through? And I don't mean to be cavalier about this, but this is all stuff that we've spent hours and hours and hours talking about already. So I don't know that we need to talk about this stuff anymore, but we're, we're welcome to, uh, compliment or do whatever you want, but we need to get this voted on and, and put through here. They've already been approved projects. This is just bonding again. All right. So why don't we, actually, why don't we go to D? So go smoother. So Christina, what's the question on D? Do you have the background?
Yes, I do, sir.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Anybody else before we go through it?
And I have the background on E also.
Okay, good. Excellent. All right. So, um, Tom, can you start with A? I'm going to give you A through D to read. So, all right. So we have to read each one of these. This is all the language?
Resolution, yeah, all the way through, uh, here. I'll give you that so you can read.
Oh, that's the same thing. Okay.
Uh, resolution authorizing an appropriation of $150,000 for the tax assessor 2022 project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $150,000. Second.
That's Robin. All in favor?
That's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $160,000 for the information technology 2022 project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $160,000.
Uh, second. Kim, all in favor?
That's unanimous. Thank you. Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $133,292 for the emergency management 2022 project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $133,292.
Second. Hillary, all in favor? That's unanimous.
Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $1,084,000 for the DPW town buildings 2022 project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed one, $1,084,000.
Second. Rita, all in favor? That's unanimous. All right. You can pass that sheet to your right. Robin, you're up, starting with E.
Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $2,795,000 for DPW administration and engineering 2022 project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in amount not to exceed $2,795,000.
Second.
Second.
Mark, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Approve, uh, resolution authorizing an appropriation of $530,000 for the DPW highways 2022 project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in amount not to exceed $530,000.
Second. Tom, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $1,537,500 for the DPW parks 2022 project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in amount not to exceed $1,537,500.
Second. Hillary, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $455,000 for the Waviney Park Playground 2022 project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $455,000.
Second. Rita, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $450,000 for the Dunning Stadium Lights 2022 project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in amount not to exceed $450,000.
Second. Mike? All in favor? That's unanimous. All right, Robin, you want to take a break? Are you okay?
I'll just finish this. Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $175,000 for the Irwin Park Boardwalk 2022 project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $175,000.
Second. Christina, all in favor? Uh, opposed. Uh, Penny's opposed. Oh, so, uh, it's. Oh, unanimous. Oh, you raised your hand. I'm sorry, Penny. I see you. Okay, good. Thank you. All right. Next up. Kim?
Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $2,633,750 for the school's 2022 project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $2,633,750.
Second. Christina, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $200,000 for the Innovation Center 2022 project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $200,000.
Second. Christina, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $350,000 for the Planetarium 2022 project and the financing of said appropriation by the issuance of general obligation bonds of the town and notes in anticipation of such bonds in an amount not to exceed $350,000.
Second. Hillary? All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Last but not least, resolution authority, authorizing an appropriation of $1,180,602 for the Bond Premium 2022 project and the financing of said appropriation by the allocation of bonds proceeds on hand in an amount not to exceed $1,180,602.
Second. Rita, all in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. Thank you to the readers. All right. Next up, we have the Vine Cottage. Okay. So, uh, let me get that amount to read in. All right. You want to make a motion, Christina? Come on. Go ahead. It's been your baby.
Yeah. Resolution authorizing an appropriation of $57,400.
To repaint.
For, to repaint the Vine Cottage for the Bond Premium 2022.
Oh, no, no bond. Regular, right? We're just approving it.
Approving the project.
Yeah.
The Vine Cottage.
All right. Second. Kim, all in favor?
Enthusiastically.
Enthusiastically. That's unanimous. Get that baby painted. All right. When is it going to get painted? That's the next question. Any idea? When will it be painted? We want it done by Memorial Day.
Is it going to be painted and carpenter repairs to the building? Okay, thank you.
It's going to be great.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. All right. Uh, next up, we have real estate negotiations. So we have to go into executive. Did we miss anything, Tucker? It's been a full night here. Okay. So, um, unfortunately, anybody that's not involved in these negotiations, we have to, we have to, um, vote to go into executive. So first thing we need is a motion. Christina?
Motion to move into executive session.
Second, Tom, all in favor? That's unanimous. Um, and Tucker, you'll invite those who need to be in the room, in the room.
I invite Kevin, Michael Chen, Bill, Tiger, myself, Anne. That's it. You just got to give me a moment to move everybody into the room.
Okay, thank you. We'll be back. Welcome back. Um, so just to recap, um, what we can say, because, you know, we've, we've had a couple of executive sessions about, we, we were talking about the playhouse. Um, and obviously we can't talk about the details, but we did have some public comment tonight that we'd like to respond to, to let folks know that we're on a track, hopefully by June to, uh, make some details public. And, and we will have a special, solid public meeting, meaning that it's going to be a dedicated special meeting of the town council to address questions, take feedback. Um, you know, we, we've, we haven't had a, a, a big meeting like this really since before COVID, where you'd have this room full or full on Zoom to weigh in on, on basically a, a big deal in town. So, uh, we look forward to that. We look forward to sharing the details and, uh, it's all we can have at this point. So, um, stay tuned. All right. Next up, we have, uh, committee reports. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Number 10, we have play, so playhouse approval project. So we, we have, we need to repoint the leaky building of the playhouse. So, uh, Tiger, you want to, do you want to just give us a quick two second? We've talked about this a little bit, but maybe just, uh, let us recall where the money's coming from and how, uh, and what we're doing.
Sure. So, um, we have a, excuse me, we have some exterior work to do on the building. Approximately, it's estimated by architect around $500,000 with the works and repointing. Then some, um, work as far as around the exits to upgrade for accessibility issues. And then, uh, the architectural fees are included in that as well. So we have approximately $550,000, $600,000 planned for exterior work. The, uh, board of finance approved the transfer of, um, monies from the movie fund itself, from the movie theater fund for $750,000. And we're basically asking for that and approval of the project itself.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have a question. Will there be any improvements to the? I have a question. Will there be any improvements to the walk that comes from the parking lot to town?
Eventually, yes. Yeah.
But not part of this project?
Some of it will be, and then some will be with the greater project itself. You know, we have to do some drainage work and things around the footings and stuff, and at that point in time, we'll come forward and take care of that. Right now, we're looking at just what's shown around the building, and then we'll take care of that exiting in and around the building itself.
Can you replace in the front windows?
Yes.
As part of the exterior work?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Any other questions? All right. So need a motion. So let's make the motion for $750,000 for exterior work.
No, it's approval.
So we don't need to, I thought we were talking about a dollar sheet. That's good. Okay. So let's, uh, make a motion.
Make a motion.
So move to approve a project for $750,000.
So just read.
Just the project.
Yeah. So, so, um, yeah, that was a transfer. So there's no money involved, actually. It's, uh, already there. So.
Of the project.
So it's, it's an approval of a request from the Department of Public Works to approve the exterior improvements project for the Playhouse. Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
Mike seconds it.
Yes.
All in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you very much. It's getting late, guys. Thank you for that.
Yes.
Good idea.
Can we do one quick committee report?
Yes.
Okay, so to, for bylaws and ordinances committee tomorrow, um, at 7:00 PM. Sorry, Tom, I just jumped right in. We're going to have a Zoom-only meeting, uh, regarding possible limitations to the use of gas-powered leaf blowers in New Canaan. And again, that will be Zoom-only. The link is, and the agenda are on the town calendar.
Great. Any other, um, or committee reports that are pressing?
The only thing that, just because, Kim, you had brought something up earlier, um, regarding, trying to remember.
What I brought up, the special appropriation to the Board of Finance.
Yes. So that did come up in the BOE meeting. I don't know if you, um, thought, Tom, that.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
So my understanding is that po- part of the whole budget process left a gap.
Yes.
Which will be filled predictably by a $500 and change, $1,000.
They think it might be.
Whatever, several hundred thousand dollars, but the, okay, the bulk of, the bulk of that was known months ago.
Yes.
Because they didn't, the Board of Finance did not appropriate the entire projected costs of medical, of healthcare.
Right. So that's, and that's kind of a, um, so, yes, there will be special appropriations, but to Tom's point, it is expected that was like, kind of like baked into what they already expect, right? So it's, but now it's just about the process.
Yes.
There was how, so, so yes, there will be one in June, or they expect it to happen in June, and they expect it to be around $863,000. Um, but in having that conversation, there was an objection to this whole process, the fact that we're doing this, you know, like, okay, we're taking some money from the start times, we're taking some money from the, you know, um, general fund, general funds, and then we're going to have the special appropriations. Because when you're trying to compare budget to budget, it gets really confusing. So there was, um, some concern doing this, like going forward, we shouldn't be doing this. This should be a more of a one-step process. But we're kind of stuck where we are for this year.
That's an issue for the Board of Finance. It's.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure, because the whole purpose of the internal service fund is to pick it to, to even all those fluctuations.
Yep.
They have the corridor right now. If they put the $8,000, $100,000 in there right now, they don't need it in there at the corridor. So we try to understand why they've increased their budget for their medical and the general funds and have it spike on, on money that doesn't need to go to the fund when it's already funded right now. Unless the next six weeks, they have, you know, a catastrophic claim, leaving that $300,000 differential. So putting $800,000, you're bringing, they're, they're a million and two right now. They were projecting that they would use $4 million shortfall in their fund balance. They have 5.2 going into the year. They were projecting 4. something would bring it down. They're not, those projections aren't, haven't come through. So right now, they have $1.2 million in their fund balance. They need one point, just under 1.1 for their corridor. So they could go over $100,000 right now. So they're going to put another $800 that is not needed, which that $800 technically is savings for the town that you put back to the general fund balance for spending reserve for next year's, um, medical.
Yeah, but I, I, I think that, that's your point of view.
Yeah.
The, the other point of view is that, is that the Board of Finance was given a budget for projected medical claims and decided not to fund that full budget. Right? And, and they agreed to have a special appropriation at a future date, which, and, and that alone creates the problem of, of limiting apples to apples comparison of one budget year to the next.
The way to look at it is where they started from. The reason they dropped it and didn't fund it is because they were sitting on $5.2 million in the fund balance already. And they came back in 2021, I think it was, and asked for an appropriation of $1.9 million. They still had $5 million at the end of the year. They didn't even need the 1.9. That should have come back to the town, or the town should have kept those savings. Their corridor was $1.2 million at that point, and they were sitting on $5.
That gets kind of complicated. That's, that's your point of view, but the point is right now we're committed to doing a special appropriation.
Their numbers are not my point of view. These are actual numbers of the book.
No, no, no.
They had a reserve of $5 million, asking for an appropriation for 1.9, committing up what they felt they needed.
So you're suggesting to the Board of Finance that they made a mistake in committing to do the special appropriation. It was unnecessary.
From the information that's given, so yes.
Okay. So we'll let, let that be on the record. The Board of Finance made a mistake.
Because they made decisions based on information that was told to them, not having the history of what was in the fund. I analyzed it back to 2013.
This isn't, this isn't really a subject for the town council.
Yeah.
The point Rita's making, a simple point is that special appropriations are problematic when you want to do year-to-year comparisons. It's, that's all our issue is.
And I was just stating that that was their, their thoughts.
All right. So, um.
Just one more thing. Sorry. The Parks and Rec, um, passed the Steve Benko pool dedication. So could you give out that information?
Yes. So June 4th at 10:30 AM, uh, you all should have an invitation in your email. Uh, we're dedicating the Steve Benko pool. Steve's family will be there and, uh, be a special dedication and a little reception afterward. So any, every, the, the town is welcome. So anybody is welcome to join. There'll be plenty of room, plenty of parking, plenty of seating. So everybody come out, June 4th, 10:30 AM at the pool. And before that, um, one more thing, um, I reminded that we march together on Memorial Day. So, uh, everybody, everybody should be together.
Have we purchased a banner yet?
If we can.
Have a banner yet? No one knows who we are when we walk down the street.
For something.
Okay.
Can I, can I just? Steve, can I just mention one thing?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, Mark.
No, I, I just want to, uh, Kevin mentioned, uh, the ARPA and, and mentioned my name as it relates to the New Canaan Community Foundation. I just want to give an update on that one, uh, for all. You know, obviously, the New Canaan Community Foundation's been busy. They had their lunch in, and they're doing their normal annual grant, uh, process or cycle. And they're currently reviewing, uh, the ask for ARPA from the nonprofits. As it currently stands, uh, they broke into three groups, and those three groups are, uh, tasked with identifying or not identifying the asks, and they've now, they're now going back to those organizations. Some of them, uh, require a couple more questions. Once that's done, that bucket or that number will then make its way through the normal appropriation process, through the Board of Selectmen, up to the Board of Finance, and then to us. So eventually we'll have that number. I just want to give you an update. It, it is taking some time. They're busy people, and they're doing great work for us. So that's where we stand on the, the New Canaan Community Foundations. Or the nonprofit work that they're helping us with, and as it relates to ARPA. And that's it.
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate it. Maria, you good? Okay. Hey, Penny, enjoy your trip. Go back to, go back to vacation. Will you? Come on.
I gotta go to bed. What do you mean?
What do you mean? You, you gotta, you're probably waking up soon.
Enjoy. Enjoy. Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right. Motion adjourned. All in favor?
Night, everyone.
Thank you, Kevin.